Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to welcome you to the June 14th Council Meeting back in caucus chambers. Would you all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be given by me? We thank you, our Lord, for those of us who have made it through this pandemic. We pray for those who we have lost. We beg we never have to endure such a trying period again. We thank you for allowing us to return to some resemblance of pre-COVID times. These past months, our city has undergone some trying times. With your help, we worked through them. They were very troubling times. We ask that you help us through the rest of our terms and give guidance and a good path to follow for those who are in our future. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. My point of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I ask at this time that you silence your cellphones as I am doing now so that doesn't disturb the meeting in progress. Before we get started with tonight's meeting, I have a few things I'd like to read. I'd like to thank everyone for their cooperation during this pandemic thing. We welcome you back from person to our meetings. Our directors are online or in person down here in a few spots. The ones that aren't here, they'll be on the line for communications. We've patterned everything after CDC guidelines. We've worked that through our Human Resources Director, Jeanie Sowers. And this, I ask you that you keep any conversations down to a low hush because the microphone is now behind you. It's not in front like it has been in the future, and it will pick up every little sound. And we need the communications from the audio, I mean, from the board and the directors so that we can make clear and concise notes for clerk of council. So Barb, as we move on with the meeting, would you please take a roll call?
Yes. Dudley?
Mike Dudley here.
Donahue?
Here.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic here.
Johnson?
Jonathan here.
Blake?
Here.
Taglerini?
Here.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn here.
Seven council members present.
Seven councilmen are here.
Thank you. Reading and disposal of the council minutes for Monday, May 24th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Don, Mr. Blake.
I'd like to make a motion to accept irregular minutes, irregular meeting minutes of council for Monday, May 24th, 2021.
May I have a second on that? I will second it. Okay, second. Barb, would you take a roll call on the acceptance?
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Johnson?
Jonathan votes yes.
That passes seven yes votes. Excuse me. Okay. Next, are there any written communications for council?
No, Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Mr. Vaughn, Councilman Vaughn, you made an indication in caucus.
Yes, I have two letters I would like to read tonight. It was given to the Safety Committee. First one is June 8th, 2021, to Acting Police Chief Mark Kay from Chief Ken Strobe regarding the shooting on Alvin. Dear Acting Chief Kay, I would like to thank your officers for assisting us at the shootings which occurred on May 31st, 2021, on Alvin Avenue. Before we arrived on scene, they had applied tourniquets to some of the victims, which in no doubt had an effect on the outcome for these patients. Please extend my thanks to them for an outstanding job they did. Respectfully, Kenneth Strobe, Jr., Chief of Fire. Now my next one. Fancy paper clips. The next one is concerning St. Rita's Senior Housing at 10614 Granger Road, Garfield Heights, Ohio, 44125. Dear Sir or Madame, I would like to thank the maintenance workers for assisting my department at the fire which occurred on June 4th, 2021, in Room 315. Their quick actions stopping out the small fire before we arrived prevented it from escalating and potentially causing a major problem. Unfortunately, I do not have their names, but want to express my thanks. Sincerely, Kenneth R. Strope, Jr., Chief of Fire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Vaughn, for those letters. We appreciate that. And thank you, Chief Strobe, for your comments. Okay. Any other communications received? None in council, so go move on. Are there any committee reports?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have none this evening.
Thank you, Councilman. We will move on to the reports of the mayor and the directors on tonight's legislation and his report also.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask everybody just for a quick moment of silence for the late Clara Stackowitz, who was at one time a first lady here in Garfield Heights. She was married to the late Mayor Raymond Stackowitz. Thank you. Clara Stackowitz was 98 years old. She passed away on June 3rd, 2021, and on behalf of the City of Garfield Heights, I attended the mass, and it was a very beautiful ceremony. I want to welcome everybody back here to the Civic Center. We, I have to actually say thank you to each and every one of the administrators here and how hard they worked in order to make the building open just for June 9th, when we officially opened, or was it June 7th? I'm sorry. I'm still asking everybody sign in when they come in. The reason for that is if we do have the pandemic outbreak again, and I've been told there's more strains and stuff, and you don't ever know what to believe, but this way we have everybody logged in and we can do the proper contact tracing if we need to. I also want to talk about the public hearing that's coming up on June 17th, 2021. I've been in conversation with industrial commercial properties in regards to the old Kmart building. They want to have it zoned U11B, which is light industry, and not retail. I think that's because they probably have a tenant that is interested in coming in there, so it'd be nice to see that revitalization happen over there on Rockside Road. I also want to talk about one of the fine restaurants we have here in Garfield Heights. I want to thank Cleveland Scene Magazine. I don't know if you've seen this, but on June 10th, they wrote an article about Arthur Treacher's. And did you know Arthur Treacher's has only two locations left? One of them's in Cuyahoga Falls, and the other one is, guess where? Right here in Garfield Heights. So I thought that was neat. I can't believe that they've been in business since the mid-1970s here in Garfield Heights, and that is just unbelievable. I remember going there as a kid, and heck, I might actually stop there sometime this week just to have some good Arthur Treacher's. The Metro Parks is doing a survey. There may have been some surveys out here on the chairs and also up in the lobby. They would like to do a survey on just what's going on in our city and how maybe they can help here. I want to congratulate Jay Mir Scott and Brianna Exton. I had the honor and the pleasure of performing their wedding ceremony on Saturday. And let me tell you, both of them are from Ward 6. I know Jay Mir from the floor covering industry. I actually met him when I was working in the floor covering industry. I did not know that his mom lived in Garfield Heights at the time. And then when he told me that, I said, well, you know, I was her councilperson at the time. But then a few years later, he says, I'm getting married. And he tells me, I'm getting married to a woman. Her name is Brianna Exton, who also is a Ward 6 resident. So I was pretty honored that they asked me to perform their ceremony, and it's not something that I like to do, but for our hometown folks, I definitely would like to do it. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Greenwich over at Aaron Signs. If you've noticed, as you go around town, the banners just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You'll see more and more of them as you drive around town of all the hometown heroes. And actually, my buddy, Mr. Suster, right there, I seen his picture the other day, almost caused an accident turning a road. I want to say congratulations to all of the seniors this year from Garfield Heights High School and Trinity High School, the entire graduating class of 2021. On behalf of the City of Garfield Heights, I'd like to say thank you or congratulations. I want to get into tonight's legislation. Ordinance number 52-221, or 52-2021, I got to take my glasses off for this, otherwise I won't be able to see, is in the addressing the position of HR Director and abolishing HR Manager. And Mr. Dudley, I was mistaken. It is an increase for Ms. Sowers, but a decrease for the overall department because of other salaries involved. Ordinance number 53, 2021, is amending Section 136, the Community Relations Committee. Resolution number 22-2021 is honoring a longtime friend of the City of Garfield Heights and really a very, very special individual. I've had the pleasure of going to school with his son and also knowing him, and that's not something that you get to do throughout a lifetime. And that's honoring the memory of David L. Mays. Resolution number 23-2021 is commending our very own Michael Clyde for his bravery and heroic efforts in saving a life during a house fire. Again, it's amazing what you've done, Mr. Clyde. Resolution number 25, 2021, is actually ratifying the appointment of Jeanie Sowers, who's been with the city for a few years now, from the Human Resources Manager to the Human Resources Director. And I just want to also say to everybody that June 19th, which is Saturday, is Juneteenth, and I want to wish everybody a proud and happy Juneteenth. And I also want to wish all the fathers a Happy Father's Day on Sunday. And with that, you have my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions from council for the mayor?
Oh, you know what, Mr. President? I'm sorry. I skipped over one very important one, and that is the resolution for our very own Barb Moline, honoring her for her service of council for 18 years. With that, you have my report.
Okay, I'm getting some backfeed from the phone.
Whoever's on the call needs to mute.
How do I mute these people? Who's on the phone right now that should mute?
We're back live. You can always hit the red button, Mike.
Okay, that would be...
Wrong button, Mike.
Okay. We aren't going to make that mistake again. Okay, got you covered. Okay. Listen, I just mastered Zoom, so. Okay. Thank you for that correction, Mayor. If the ventilator's not on right now, are we recording?
We are recording. You mind if I approach?
Please. We got to keep this transparent.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are four participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
And the mic with the line through it is the mute button, correct?
Don't hit anything.
I'm not going to. It was a lot easier from my office at home. Okay, little bit of humor there. We'll get through this. This is the first one, so. Okay. Again, are there any questions for the mayor from council? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have the reports of the directors, starting with Law Director, Tim Riley. Tim, are you online?
Can you put the microphone down to the phone? Turn the volume up on the phone, Mike.
Yes, the volume is up. Tim, are you online?
Bless you.
Okay, bless you, whoever sneezed. Okay. We'll let Tim hold off for a minute and move to the Police Chief, Chief Kay. Do you have a report for us?
Yes, please, yes. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to announce, if you've probably heard me talk before, we're going to have a Citizens Police Academy, which is something we've never done before. The idea of it, if you've ever been to one or at another police department, basically we invite people in. It's going to be like a 10-week course, one night every week for 10 weeks, and it's basically going to, I'm not going to teach people to be police officers, but the idea being is we teach you what we do and why we do it. You know, we go through all of our procedures, our policies, a bunch of interactive things. We're going to do that September 7th for 10 weeks. This first time is going to be kind of an invite only. We're going to have council members and some members of the city just so we can work out the bugs and make sure we don't, you know, embarrass ourselves too much. After that, the idea being we run it once or twice a year, and it'll be open to the public, anybody who wants to come in. And I think it'll be a real good, you know, thing to bridge some gaps here, to get people to understand. I've always had the best results when I can explain to people why we do what we do, and they can explain what they expect from us. So when we do that two-way street, it's always nice. So we're going to do that in September, and after that, I will publicize it for, you know, citizens can join as well. The other thing, in a couple of weeks, we are having a test for police chief, so very possibly next month, next meeting, there could be somebody else sitting here. I just wanted to take this time and thank everybody for their help. Mayor Burke, Mayor Clova, everybody on council. I've been doing this for almost a year now, and it's been a real honor. So I wanted to take this opportunity and really thank everybody. The citizens have been great. Sometimes you guys call and you're giving me solutions to problems when probably my job to figure out these solutions, but you guys take your time and go over things and present, even if they're, even if they're bad solutions, it gets a conversation going. So I, you know, I appreciate that. It's been a long year, but I want to kind of reassure everybody, whoever's sitting in this seat next month, you know, the officers at the department, they just do a fantastic job, and they do that on their own for the large part. If you've ever been in charge of anybody, if you have good employees, they don't require a whole lot of supervision, and that's really what we have. So, you know, if it's me, there's a couple other people taking the test, they're all great people. I work with them every day. I talk to them more than my wife, unfortunately, so I can vouch for each and every one of them. But whoever's here, they're going to continue to do a good job, and the officers are going to continue to do a good job. With that, that's my report.
Are there any questions for the chief from council? Chief, I'd like to sign up for that, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Chairman.
I'll have to check on a couple here.
You know, the glass, you were looking one way. All right, now I just got a comment, you know, for people that don't know. I tell you, chief, I had a good last year with you, you know? Even during the last year, when things were extremely, you know, really hot going on everywhere, I think you've done a great job with the group of pastors when we was meeting with you back and forth during that timeframe. You are, rather people know, he's an approachable individual. And I think because he's a little younger, it gives us an opportunity to be going in a slight different direction and more, how would I put, it's kind of better for some of our youth to be able to relate to him than what they have related to some of people in the past. But like I say, you know, you really responded for me when I needed you on stuff, and 24 hours, he's able to be called on situations. And like I say, when you, he said he was going to take something, he did. So you're not saying you're done, that's past tense or whatever. I think you're going to do a good job moving forward, and I just wanted to put that out for people that don't know him. He's done a lot to help me through some of the tough last couple of months within my community, and I thank you for that, chief.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Counselor, you got your hand up? Okay. Next, we'll move on to Service Director, Mark Seikot.
I have no report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Seikot. Is Mr.?
This is Tim Riley. Could you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Tim.
Okay.
Do you have a report?
Just wanted to know I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Let's solve that rather quickly.
Some things just don't change. Oops.
I didn't have to hit a button. Next, we'll move on, is Mr. Paul Burke online from Parks and Recreation? That was a trouble getting on. Okay, okay, no recreation report.
Want me to call?
If you would, and we'll have Mr. Crock, and we'll move back to Mr. Burke.
Mike, you forgot the fire chief.
Mr. Crock, do you have a report for us tonight?
I don't have a report, but if you're looking to stall time, I could try, yeah.
Fire, okay. Yeah, he's coming next. Okay. Next, we have Fire Chief Ken Strobe.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Friday, we were notified that we received an AFG grant for $55,000. It's for training in two thermal imagers. $18,000 of that is for the imagers. I'd also just like to show my support for Resolution 2321 for Mr. Clyde, for a selfless act of bravery on a house fire we had on East 86th Street back in May. And I'd also like to show my support for Resolution 2521 for Jeanie Sowers. Every time we've reached out to her, she's been more than helpful and very friendly face for all my employees. I appreciate everything she's done. Thank you. I have nothing else.
Any questions for Chief Strope on his report? There being none? I guess we're not in touch with Mr. Burke yet. Okay, we've gone through City Engineer. Finance Director, Barb Burrow, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. I'm asking for council support on Ordinance 52, 2021, which is amending the pay ordinance for non-union positions. We will be, again, eliminating the Human Resource Manager's position, replacing it with a Human Resource Director's position. We will also be adding a payroll clerk position onto the pay ordinance. These were requested changes that I had, I had asked, and I am asking for council support. I believe that it will take the department in a more efficient manner and allow, allow the human resources to be conducted by a director instead of myself. I'd like, I really do want to go back to just counting the beans, and I really think that this will be a great move forward for the city. I will also, in regards to that, Resolution 24, 2021, honoring Barb Moline. As the member of the Finance Department, Barb has been helpful over the years. I can't thank you enough, Barb, for coming in all those times, helping us file, helping us fax things, move things, do whatever, whatever was needed, Barb was there for us all the time, and I wanted to take this moment to thank you, Barb, on behalf of the Finance Department. And lastly, I would ask for council support of Resolution 25, 2021, which is the appointment of Jeanie Sowers as a Human Resource Director. And with that, Mr. President, you have my report.
Any questions for Ms. Burrow on her report? Mr. Dudley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the Human Resources, Barb, as in, Mrs. Sauer currently the manager of Human Resources, so that would create...
She's currently the manager.
Right, so she's already in a separate department from you, correct?
No, she was directly reporting to me as a director.
But as a manager and a lot of other places, even where I worked, the HR person didn't have to report to the Director of Finance or anything like that. It was already separate entity.
Unfortunately, that's the way it was structured by the, by the pay ordinance. It was structured that way that they were to report to Finance. They didn't have their own, the manager did not have their own department. So changing this, you're actually going to see where she doesn't report to Finance anymore. She's going to have her own department.
Well, we could just separate your departments anyway, rather than a manager.
We are doing this with this piece of ordinance.
But we could still do it without this, without the promotion to Director.
No, she would, no. No, according to the pay ordinance, she is at, she is the Human Resource Manager, part of the Finance Department, which she would report directly to me. As the human resource, as the amendment on this piece of paper, if you noticed in the, in the far right column, there is now a department for Human Resources. So she will be the Human Resource Director, no longer reporting to the Finance Director, and the payroll clerk will report to the Human Resources Director.
But we still could have amended it and just made, just like we amended it now, we could have amended it and just had her in a different department. We could have done the same thing.
And that's what this piece of ordinance is doing.
Right, but I'm saying we could have amended and maintained her as a manager and still separation just by amending the ordinance itself.
No, in the way that the city, there's a director for every department. There's a director for every department. There is no manager that is on the same level as a director in the organizational chart in the City of Garfield Heights.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow.
Thank you, Barb, I appreciate it.
Next, we'll, let's see, is Kathy here? No, Kathy's not here. Is Kathy Russ Parsons on the line? Did we get ahold of Mr. Burke?
I did, he was trying to get in one more time.
Okay.
Number begins with 402, Jason.
What was that, Mark?
I was just telling Jason that his first three numbers are 402. If he sees something on the line, 40.
And don't forget about Noreen Kuban. I think she's on the call.
Is Noreen on the line, Jason?
I'm just saying phone number, so I have no way to know that.
Does anybody know what Noreen's phone number is?
Either a 552, first three digits, or 4755484.
552 number was on, and it just...
So that would have been Noreen.
Hello?
You're on the call.
Oh, great. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead, Noreen.
Yes, I want to remind everyone that there is a public hearing on Thursday evening at 6:30 PM to discuss the rezoning of property on Rockside Road, the Kmart property and a vacant lot to the west. And they want to rezone, ICP is the owner, and ICP is redeveloping Highland Park, and they want to rezone from retail district to... to U11B office industrial. And that includes light industry, manufacturing, warehousing. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Ms. Kuban on her report? Mr. Donahue?
I just wanted to know if it's Zoom or live.
Is the meeting Zoom or live?
It will be by Zoom. Mr. Dudley is the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, and it's organized as a Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen.
Thank you, Noreen.
You're welcome.
Okay, we still have nothing for Mr. Burke. Next, we'll move on to the Building Commissioner, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, I don't have a report except to say that it's nice to be back in a live meeting again.
Yeah, we got a few glitches, but it's, we'll work through them.
No, it's much nicer.
I do prefer this, so.
I got Paul Burke on the line.
Mr. Mayor, take care, ask him about the report. Please, you have my phone.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm having some difficulties, I'm not sure what's going on. But, yeah, we had the pool open up on Saturday. It was, felt it was a pretty big success. We had quite a large turnout for it. However, for the last, I'd say about four nights in a row, we've had some kids trespassing after hours and entering the pool. You know, I'm just fearing the safety of them if, you know, one of them end up in the deep end. You know, I would try to come up with some ideas on how to further prevent it. Still working on some things. We're going to put more signage up as far as trespassing goes and whatnot. But it looks like in all four different cases, we have a different group of kids too. So, it's, you know, I don't think it's based on one or two kids. But, you know, it is a safety issue as well, so. Like I said, with that, you have my report.
Any questions for Mr. Burke on his report? Okay, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Okay, I believe we've gone through all the directors on their reports. Okay. And again, please bear with us, we are working with a new type of communications here. There's a few bugs to get out of it, but they will be worked out. Okay. Next, we'll move on to communications from citizens on tonight's agenda. These are on the agenda only. Barb, would you read the rules, please?
Comments shall be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes, with comments limited to legislation on the current evening's agenda. No citizen shall speak more than once.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wishes to speak tonight on tonight's agenda? Is there anybody wishing to speak on tonight's agenda?
It has nothing to do with.
Oh, that'll come up later in the meeting. Okay, out there, no problem. Now you know. Okay, moving right along. We will go into our legislation for the evening. Okay, moving on to tonight's ordinances and resolutions. Our first ordinance is Ordinance 52-2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number 52-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by Councilman Michael Nanadovich. An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Ordinance 89-2020, the city of Garfield Heights' plan of classification and compensation of non-union paid positions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Councilman Vaughn.
Consider by title, please.
Tonight, when we vote, we will vote yea or nay. And the only name vote will be on the adoption. So, all those in favor of. Go again, Mr. Vaughn.
Consider by title, please?
There you go. Mr. Vaughn's motion to consider by title, all those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, nay. Suspension of the three reading rule, all those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay. Oh, correction, yea, I'm good.
Are you a nay or a yea?
Yea, correction, it's a yea.
On waiver of Rule 24, all those in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Are there any nays? And on its adoption with individual name. Starting with Mr. Vaughn.
Vaughn? Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Before I vote, once again, I'd like to mention that I believe the position should stay a management position, that it could be separated. And with that, I vote no. Nay.
Donahue?
No.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes yea.
Johnson?
Nay.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
That passes four yays with three nays.
No.
Oh, correction, Chairman.
We need five on legislation like that?
Four yays.
We need five on the budget?
I believe it was four nays, wasn't it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It was four nays.
Right.
No, I had four yays.
I had four yays.
I had three nays.
Do it again.
Three nays.
The vote started with Mr. Vaughn, he voted yea. Do it with a yes and no. It would work easier.
I believe it was four nays, Mr. Chairman. Double check, I might be wrong.
Four yes and three no.
I believe it was four.
We will retake the, I will make a motion to retake the adoption vote again, answering yes or no. Barb, if you would go again.
Oh, all right. Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
No.
Donahue?
No.
Nanadovich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
No.
It's the same.
That passes with four yes votes. Okay, thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have Ordinance 53-2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number 53-2021, sponsored by Councilman Thomas Vaughn. An emergency ordinance amending Section 136, Community Relations Committee of the codified ordinances of the city of Garfield Heights.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dudley.
Consider by title?
On Mr. Dudley's motion to consider by title, all those in favor, yea. Yes?
Yea.
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 All opposed? On the suspension of the three reading rule, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Anybody, all the opposed, no? On waiver of Rule 24, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The opposed, no?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, we didn't set that right. I wanted to make a motion, put that in the legislative committee.
Okay. Backing this up a little bit, Mr. Dudley, what did you want to do after consideration by title?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's on me. I'd like to make a motion that we place Ordinance number 53-2021 into the legislative committee.
On Mr. Dudley's motion to place Ordinance 53-2021 into the legislative committee, all those in favor, vote yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, vote no. It passes seven yes votes to go into legislative committee. Next, we have Resolution 22-2021. Barb, would you read the title?
Resolution number 22-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by all of council. A resolution by the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights honoring the memory of David L. Mays and extending sincere condolences to his family.
Counsel, at this time, I would like to make a motion that I read this resolution in its entirety. Mr. Burke, you have the floor as you requested. I want, no.
No, this is Dave Mays.
This is Dave Mays. You're going to do Barb's, correct? Okay. I would like to read Mr. Mays's.
Oh, would you?
Resolution by the mayor and council, please stand up, Jones. Joe, you're his best friend, come on up. And the son. This is Mr. Mays's family and great friend. A resolution by the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights honoring the memory of David L. Mays and extending his sincere condolences to his family. Whereas the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights wish to express their sincerest condolences to the family of David L. Mays, beloved husband of Doreen, loving father of Eric and Chad, cherished grandfather of Kaja, Connor, Aisha, Connor, Kai, Kevin, Megan, and dear brother Greg and Jane. Whereas David was born on December 13th, 1941, in Garrett's Bend, West Virginia, on a farm to his parents. Clyde and Lorraine. In 1950, his parents moved to Cleveland, Ohio. And in 1954, they moved to Garfield Heights, Ohio. And whereas David graduated from Garfield Heights High School and served in the Army from '62 to 1969. And whereas David and his wife, Doreen, met at a wedding in 1970. They were later married on April 20th, 1974. David and Doreen lived on Green Drive in Garfield Heights with their two children, Eric and Chad. Eric and Chad both participated in ice swim meets that their dad officiated for 15 years. Whereas David worked at various car dealerships in charge of the service departments. After retirement, he got a job at Humphreys Popcorn, the old Euclid Beach Park popcorn, making popcorn balls and taffy for several years. Whereas David was very active in the community, he served on the zoning board of appeals and tax incentive review council for the city of Garfield Heights, and was a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, CIRP, for several years. And whereas Dave had a love for cars and raced at the old Cloverleaf Track and Thompson Track. He was an avid fisherman and enjoyed golfing. And whereas David was dedicated to his grandkids and regularly attended all of their sporting events of often traveling out of town. He took to fishing, exploring caves and waterfalls and picnics and parks. And whereas David and Kaja's, David's granddaughter, named him Pops, which he was lovingly referred to by his friends and family. And whereas David passed away April 26th, 2021, at the age of 79, he will always be remembered for his service to the Garfield Heights community. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Garfield Heights, Ohio. Section 1, the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights join to pay tribute to the memory of David L. Mays and extend our sincere condolences to his family. Section 2, the clerk of council is hereby authorized and directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to the family of David L. Mays with our deepest sympathy in the local news media. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Thank you, Mayor.
This microphone. Mrs. Mays, Mr. Mays, I again want to just echo my condolences to both of you for the loss of David. Mr. Suster, I know how good of a friend he was to you. And I also offer my condolences to you as well. I have the resolution right here. And if you would, I would sign it. And then I'll also get the president of city council to sign it,
We'll move on to finishing this. We did not have to suspend the three reading rule. We'll move on to the adoption of this ordinance, I mean, this resolution for Mr. Mays. Barb, we need an individual on.
Didn't do consider by title.
I thought we did consider by title. Okay. Then we will consider by title. Okay, we will start with considered by title. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? We don't have to worry about the suspending the three reading rule because we read it in its entirety. On the adoption, starting with myself. Barb?
Nanadovich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
That passes seven yes votes. Thank you, council.
Recording has stopped.
Jason, we've ceased recording. Matthew? The recording stopped.
It's being recorded like it normally is before we got into the, the meeting's being recorded like it was pre-pandemic. So, it doesn't need that. That was just for the directors.
Okay.
Now, we don't have to hear this echo anymore. Thank you.
Okay, I can hang this up?
Yes.
Thank God. Thank you for laughing at that, I appreciate it. Okay, next we'll move on to Resolution 23, 2021. Barb, would you read the title?
Resolution number 23, 2021. Sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by all of council. A resolution by the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights, commending Michael Clyde for his bravery and heroic efforts in saving a life during a house fire.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dudley?
Considered by title?
On the motion by Mr. Dudley, considered by title. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. On suspension of the three reading rule, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All those opposed? No? Okay. Did we want to read this on the floor?
I would recommend it, yes.
Okay, then we have to back up over here. Okay. Barb, if you would be so kind as to... I'd like to make a motion to remove the suspend the three reading rule. May I have a second on that?
Second it.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Barb, would you read the resolution in its entirety?
Yes. Whereas the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights commend Michael Clyde for saving the life of a woman during a house fire on Sunday, May 16th, 2021. And whereas, Michael Clyde served in the Navy from 1984 to 1993 and has been a resident of the city of Garfield Heights for three years. And whereas, on the morning of May 16th, 2021, at approximately 8:00 a.m., Michael was on his way to work at Indo Painting and Construction when he pulled out of his driveway and saw smoke coming from a house on 4923 East 86th Street. And whereas, Michael proceeded to the house where he saw several neighbors standing outside. He asked if anyone was still inside the house and was told, "Yes, we think so." Without any regard for his own safety, Michael ran to the burning house and kicked in the front and shouted, "Is there anyone in here?" A woman responded, "Yes." He then told her to meet him in the hallway and rescue the terrified woman out of the smoke-filled house without hesitation. And whereas, when the Garfield Heights Fire Department arrived on the scene, Michael alerted them that a mother and child may still be on the second floor. But thankfully, after a full sweep of the house, no one else was found inside. And whereas, the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights would like to commend Michael Clyde for his bravery and heroic efforts in saving a life during a house fire. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Garfield Heights, Ohio, that section one, the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights join to commend Michael Clyde for his bravery and heroic efforts in saving a life during a house fire. Section two, the clerk of council is hereby authorized and directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to the local news media. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Thank you. Okay, on Resolution 23, 2021, on its adoption, starting with Mr. Dudley?
All right. Dudley?
Yes.
Donahoo?
Yes.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Seven.
That passes seven yes votes. Next on the agenda here, we have Resolution 24, 2021. Yes.
I believe Mr. Clyde and his family is here tonight.
Okay.
So if they would please come up?
Yes, please.
Mr. Nadas, can you hear me? This is Tim Riley.
Somebody, Mr. Riley?
And tell them they need to waive the three readings on all these.
We still have to waive three readings? Okay. Okay. Okay, Tim, would it be out of order to do that right now? Okay, it would not be out of order. We'll be right with you, Mr. Clyde. Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
You need to waive the three readings on all of them. You can do that now.
Okay. To make this, I thought we just won't be read it in entirety, okay. We have three resolutions we're going to have to waive the three reading rule on. Council, do I make a motion to amend the final tally, Mr. Riley?
Motion to waive the three readings.
On each one of them individually?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I would like to make a motion to waive the three reading rule on Resolution 22, 2021. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, no? That passes, Barb, three readings. Okay. On Resolution 23, 2021, to waive the three reading rule, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Anybody opposed? Mr. Burke, the floor is yours again. Mr. Clyde's family, come up. I gotta sign it right now. Elegies. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Clyde, I want to say on behalf of the city of Garfield Heights that we're very proud of what you did and we're very thankful of what you did. And I don't know anybody that... Let me just say this. Previously, I didn't know anybody that would just run into a burning house that wasn't trained to do so, and I'm very glad that you did. And I just want you to know, we appreciate you for that. And here's a copy of the resolution.
Hey, Mr. Clyde, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim, for straightening us out on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution 24, 2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Resolution number 24, 2021. Sponsored by councilperson Jason Blake, co-sponsored by Mayor Burke and the rest of council. A resolution on behalf of the mayor and council honoring clerk of council Barbara Mullen for her 18 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Garfield Heights.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Blake?
Considered by title, please?
On the motion by Mr. Blake, councilman Blake to consider by title.
Excuse me, point of order? Point of order, Mr. President? I believe somebody has to make a motion to read the resolution in its entirety.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vaughn?
At this time, can we have Mayor Burke please read this resolution in its entirety, please?
Okay, on the motion by Mr. Vaughn to read the resolution in its entirety, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Mr. Burke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mayor Burke.
Resolution number 24-2021. Sponsored by councilperson Jason Blake, co-sponsored by Mayor Burke and the rest of council. A resolution on behalf of the mayor and council honoring clerk of council Barbara Mullen for her 18 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Garfield Heights. Whereas Barbara Mullen graduated from Garfield Heights High School and Ohio University. And whereas Barbara has two wonderful children, Sylvie and William, and one amazing grandson, Lucas. And whereas Barbara lived in Paris, France for 20 years and worked as an executive secretary for the Committee on Space Research where she had the opportunity to meet astronauts. She traveled to 16 countries before returning to live in Garfield Heights in 1990. And whereas Barbara has been very active in the community. She served as the secretary of the Garfield Heights Home Days Committee, secretary and chair of civic and welfare of the Garfield Heights Junior Women's League, as well as the secretary to planning commission. And whereas Barbara has served as the clerk of council for Garfield Heights since 2003. And whereas Barbara will be retiring as of June 30th, 2021 and is looking forward to traveling and spending more time with her family, especially her grandson Lucas. Her hobbies include reading, cooking, and stamp collecting. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Garfield Heights, Ohio, that section one, the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the city of Garfield Heights join to honor and thank Barbara Mullen for her 18 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the city of Garfield Heights. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Thank you. Now wait a minute, gentlemen. Now wait a minute, gentlemen, you still have to vote. Just to let you know.
Yes. How often the third time's the charm? Okay. We read it entirely, we don't have to consider by title.
Suspend the three reading rule.
Yes, that's where we're gonna start. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Barb, would you... All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? And on its adoption, starting with councilman who sponsored it? Mr. Blake. Starting with Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Blake?
Yes.
You're not retired yet.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Before I vote, I'd like to say I spent 13, I believe it was almost 13 and a half years or something with Barb and she has served as a clerk in here, you know. And when I first came to council, I depended on calling her, getting information from her as well as some of my council colleagues at the same time. But not just being the clerk, you'd be surprised how much knowledge that woman has about how things are run on this floor and how council operate, more than people realize. She was just not a clerk. She was much more. And I appreciate everything you've done for me as well as council too, Barb. And with that, I vote yes.
Thank you, Michael. Donahoo?
Yes.
Nanadovich?
Before I vote, Barb, I wish you the best. I wish you a very, very long and happy retirement, pursuing your hobbies and enjoying your family as you always have. And with that, I do vote yes.
Thank you. Johnson?
Before I vote, Barb, happy retirement.
Thank you.
Johnson votes yes.
All right. We have seven yes.
That passes with seven yes votes. Again, Barb, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Okay. Get on to our... Thank you, Matthew. Thank you for the honor.
Thank you for reading that. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And moving now on our last resolution for the evening, Resolution 25, 2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Resolution number 25, 2021. Sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by Councilman Michael Nanadovich. An emergency resolution ratifying the appointment by the mayor of Genie Sowers to act as the Human Resources Director for the city of Garfield Heights, Ohio during the period commencing June 14th, 2021, to serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
I would like to make a motion to consider by title. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? On the suspension of the three reading rule, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? On the waiver of Rule 24, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? And on its adoption, starting with me.
Nanad... Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes yes.
Johnson?
Jonathan votes yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
No.
Donahoo?
No.
Five yes.
Five yes, two no. That passes with five yes votes and two no votes. Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will move on to comments by citizens. Barb, would you read the rules, please?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the city hall department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a city hall department or a councilperson is made and there is a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then be presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No citizen shall be heard more than once.
Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight? You had your hand up first, sir. Jump to the podium, state your name and address. This is not anything of a first-time nature. You've spoken to a council representative a few days ago? I like the days ago part, thank you. The floor is yours, state your name and address for our clerk.
Okay, my name is Mike Carretti, C-A-R-E-T-T-I. I live at 9713 South Highland, here in Garfield Heights. You know, getting, driving the streets of Garfield Heights is going to be kind of a dangerous situation. You know, for one thing, backing out of my driveway is like backing into 480. You know, it's a 25 mile an hour zone, but cars are going well in excess of 35 and 40. And then when they approach the stop sign, they don't even slow down, they just shoot straight through it. The other day, I went up to the grocery store. I approached the red light, the stop sign on East 98th, I started to go. I seen a car coming from my left at a high rate of speed. He just blew right through the stop sign. Then I got up to 104th, same thing happened again. And then today, I'm coming from Dave's, driving down East 98th. You know, there's a police car now sitting at East 98th in Park Heights and absolutely no deterrent. There was a car coming out of Park Heights, right through the stop sign. Now, somebody's gonna get killed. Now, somebody's gonna get killed, and it's coming soon. You know, there's a lot of little kids that aren't being supervised. You know, I see them on my street all the time. You know, little tiny kids, two, three, four, five years old. You know, their mother boots them out of the house, and they just run anywhere, back and forth the streets, and, you know, something bad is gonna happen, it's coming because of the traffic. You know, I realize Garfield Heights has its hands full, you know, with all the what's going on, with all the escalating crime, but this is far from the city that I grew up in. You know, I'm born and raised in Garfield Heights, and I've never seen anything like this before. You know, it's starting to get bad. Garfield Heights is getting a reputation. And, yeah, it breaks my heart, you know, this is my hometown, and I'd just like to see people act a little more civilized. Thank you.
Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, sir, I appreciate your comments. As you noted, there is a traffic car park there that's got some video surveillance equipment in it, so we're monitoring the situation. We're down to one traffic officer at this time, so anytime we can get him in the area, to actually sit and write tickets, we have him there. Unfortunately, he's spread with, you can imagine throughout the rest of the city how many traffic complaints there are. So I agree with you, there is a problem there, we're doing our best to address it, we're gonna keep, we got some other ideas in the works too, but you're not wrong about it. Our guys see it as well, so we're gonna address it, and we're working to do that.
And if I can just add, sir, there was a meeting that Councilman Johnson and I had with residents there in your ward and in that neighborhood, and that, they requested to have that car there with the video surveillance. So these characters think they're gonna get away with it, sooner or later, we're gonna get them. So, you know, just bear with us, but that was just the Friday before Memorial Day that we had that meeting. So I'm glad, chief, that you guys got the car out there as soon as you could, I appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Good evening.
You've spoken to somebody about this before? I know you have, but I have to ask.
Yes.
You know the rules.
Yeah, I'm Mildred Whitmore, I live at one-three-one-five-four-Forestale-Dry. I need some clarification pertaining to walking the dogs in the playground. Now, almost two years ago, I talked to a dog lady, and she says okay to walk the dogs in the playground. Ms. Patterson and I at Mayor Longo had signs put up in that playground years ago. Someone has moved a sign near the parking lot, but the one is still there at Forestale and Cranwood. They have a couple of neighbors who's been walking the dogs in the playground, you have the people from up in apartments walking the dogs in the playground. And the other day, my neighbor came over, and he asked me, have you seen the signs in the playground? What signs? He said, those little green things. Can I show you these?
Please. Oh, there you go, I've seen them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is the sign. This is defeating the purpose of the sign that we had put up there back when Longo was and the mayor. So now, do your dog warden know the rules? Or has the rules changed?
Rules have not changed.
Why would you want someone to walk their dogs in the playground where the children run and play?
As it says, pick up the poop, and they're not doing that.
The playground is one of my pets over there, because Mayor Longo consulted me and Ms. Patterson when they put the equipment over there. I have spoken to people over there, one girl, she's just indignant, she don't care about the sign. Why would the sewer district come around and put these signs all over the playground? Do they have permission from the city, or do they have to get permission from the city?
That I would have to direct to our safety, I mean, our service director.
Okay, might have been a little miscommunication, Mr. Dudley called us and asked us to put some dog signs up about people, I thought, removing the poop. I didn't realize that there was no dog walking in that area. So we had these signs that were given us by the Northeast Regional Sewer Division, so that's why I had our guys put those up there, so. It might have been just some miscommunication, I wasn't aware that we weren't allowed to walk the dogs in the park.
Not a park, it's a playground. Little kids will say the park, but it's a playground.
Under, yeah, playground.
Is it possible when the police is walking around there, like in the evening, when people have their children in the playground, because there's some big dogs come from up there in that apartment?
The, like our chief has said, the police are quite busy, but if you see this happening...
They're in the neighborhood.
If they're in the neighborhood, yeah, they should pass by, they probably do. We just don't see them sometimes. I mean, they come by, I mean, we're not focused just on that one part all the time, but I'm sure our police do, if they're in the neighborhood, make a pass. And I'm sure if they seen something like that, they would say something, I'm positive they would.
I know, last week, a little dog two houses down had got out and got over there to children in the playground, their parents had to hubble up their children. Police was called, the police was over there, and they just followed the dog, and followed the dog, till the dog decided to come back home. Well, he came almost to the bus stop there, and the police asked me, well, where did the dog live? And I showed him. And so I don't know if he reported it or not, but the dog is always getting out, because he's got it beat twice.
What kind of dog are we talking?
Mrs. Whitmore, if you, if you could, I, let me look into this, let me, let me get back to you on this.
I wish you'd never put these signs in the playground with removal.
Yeah, we'll take those out.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, oh, excuse me, ma'am, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
I wanted to mention something for you too, Ms. Whitmore. I think it was a miscommunication with, with the email, because the email I did send, I think when they, whoever gave you the information, they didn't communicate it to you fully. Because I actually took a picture, and I attached a picture of that right next to Greg's house, where it shows no walking, no dogs, you know, their dogs are prohibited from being there. And I thought, when I was told that they were there, I thought they had put up the big sign, but that's where the miscommunication. But that's the sign that I wanted placed where it says no dogs, right there where they parked their cars, and one to face Forestale. Now, what is happening up at East one, East one-hundred-and-thirty-first apartment, there's a lot of upgrade going up there. We shouldn't in a few have any dogs coming from there, because they are actually, if you go in there, you can see they building a dog park, because that's a complaint I had, but they got a good management team up there to talk to. Right in the back, the apartments up there, where the apartments are, not where we at, or the playground, they actually have an area they didn't cut back there, and they actually building a dog park, because they getting quite a few dogs, mayor and council, in the apartment complex. So in a few, you can see the progress being made. The residents up there will keep their dogs when they walking them to poop them, so they don't put them nobody yard, because I don't let nobody dog use my, my garage, you're not, you ain't even doing that. But they should, in a few, and I mean shortly here, probably within the next month and a half, that park can be finished, and their dogs will be walked to use the bathroom up there. But I do agree with you on one thing, I would like, and I know we kind of tied up, that when you have people walking these dogs, sometimes the kids, the dogs are bigger than the kids. Second of all, because we require them to have insurance, it would be nice every once while, to me, it's not harassing, if you ask somebody for proof of insurance for the dog. Because if I get bit by your dog, and you don't actually own your property, who do I sue if you don't have a job? So I am deeply concerned about that, because the animals are bigger than the individuals walking them. But that's one to mention. So I think it was a miscommunication, but when I took the picture Greg, that it got them. But definitely, like you say, the signs are gonna be placed up there. But I bring, you're bringing it to everybody's attention, Ms. Whitmore, thank you there.
We'll take care of that early tomorrow.
And the ordinance, our dog warden is very much familiar with that, that a person that is walking the dog has to be able to control the dog. That is written into the ordinance, so if it's a kid walking a fifty-pound dog, and the kid weighs twenty-five, they're in violation already, so. Is there anybody else? Yes, please. Have you spoken to somebody about this?
I have, I spoke with Mayor Burke.
Okay, state your name and address for our record, please.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Marina Palamino-Bach, address five-oh-three-two, East one-seventeenth. It's the little library house, come grab a book if you can. Good evening. So for the last two and a half months, I've been honored and privileged to serve with an incredible group of Garfield Heights residents. They're seated with me this evening, Sarah, Vanessa, Ian, Kevin, Bob, Ralph is not in attendance, and... There's Ralph, hey, Ralph. We have our team here this evening. For the last two and a half months, we have been active and working together and trying to figure out who one another, who each other is, with limited guidance from the mayor and zero input from council. We've been doing the work to the very best of our abilities. This work includes planning a community survey, a month-long initiative to gather data from the residents, numerical and empirical data, understanding who everyone is, what their needs are, what holes do they see, what plannings could happen to fill in those gaps. We've connected with a nonprofit in Cleveland called the Cleveland Leadership Center to extend our network opportunities and our professional development opportunities for the members, in order to bring those learnings back into the city. We've also been planning a city government and candidate meet and greet and family touch a truck event to provide greater transparency and communication with the residents and elected officials. Now, in that regard, I understand that all of our efforts have not necessarily been appreciated by council, recognized by council, and even angered in some regards, council, particularly Councilman Dudley. And in that way, I know I am not perfect, I am no, I am not trained completely. However, I want to tell you what I am not and what I am. I am not a career politician, I am not trained in Robert's Rules or Procedures, I'm not fully versed in the Ohio Revised Code, but I am a driven researcher, writer, and reader. I am a passionate and trained educator and educational leader. I am an entrepreneur, I am a mother who will do anything to ensure a safe and productive community for my children, because I will not leave this community. And I am a Garfield Heights homeowner and taxpayer who is understanding the complaints of this city, because I have experienced it firsthand, and I would like to tell you about that this evening. The last meeting that we have had as a community council, as a community engagement, community relations meeting, based on the advice from the mayor, we had all agreed, we need to figure out who we are, what we are, what are we doing, because we're doing this independently and by ourselves. So based on that, in our very first two meetings, we were given the advice, and we all agreed to have closed meetings. So we were trying to figure out who we were and what we were doing, and how we could enact the duties in this legislation. We heard nothing different from council, we never spoke with a council member, we never had a council member reach out to us. Tonight...
Hold on, we're gonna get our turn. I'm waiting on this one, okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, me too. I run the meeting yet.
We know that, Mr. Chairman.
Let me do that.
Prior to interviewing with Mayor Burke for this role in February and in April, I had no contact with the Garfield Heights City Government, nor any leadership role within it. I was primarily a teacher and a mother. However, in seeing the pandemic, I understand the needs for our community to improve, and if I am to create a community for my boys to grow up in and to flourish in, I need to take a more active role. As we were having this active role and working through our agenda, I can only say that our efforts were attacked by a sitting member of council. We were torn to parts, we were derailed, we were completely taken off guard, thinking that we were going to get advice and feedback and ideas, and instead, we were attacked, to the point where another council member also felt like he had to go on the offensive, and the only way for us to get back on agenda was to me to, for me to quote Kamala Harris, and say, "Councilperson, I am speaking, and you will stop. I am speaking, and you will stop." And at that point, and only at that point, were we able to work through our agenda. I always knew that taking on a role, a leadership role in city government, might be rough, it might be putting me on the open block. It might be difficult, it might be challenging, I was expecting that from our residents.
How are we doing on time?
We have about thirty seconds.
I wasn't expecting that from elected officials. So I understand the ordinance is going to legislative committee, I don't really know what that means. I'm hoping, though, that we can continue our efforts and relationship with council, rather than in opposition.
If I may, I would like to answer you partially. First off, you mentioned the word transparency. A closed meeting does not have transparency. Even though you're organizing yourself, all public meetings involving anything with the city have to be open to the public, have to be notified. I never received, as a council member, and I speak for myself, received notice that you were even having a meeting to discuss the direction that you could take, I would have gladly given you input. The next thing I heard was, we're having a meeting, and Mr. Dudley was thrown out of the meeting, because he was a little irate, so to speak. But again, the transparency was not there, and the input that he was going to give, or was expected to at least impart upon you, was not being heard of. You closed your meeting to them.
And I believe...
We have, you, anything that's concerning the city has to be, any committee meetings have to be made public.
And if we had been, if we had been told that, we would have done it.
Again, you know, ignorance is nine-tenths of law, you can't claim ignorance, you have to read, and this is all covered in our charter, you're a committee, you have to know the charter now, you have to know the administrative code, and that's available to you online at City Hall, from any of the council people, from any of the directors, we can all give this information to you. We would be more, more than happy to help steer you in the right direction and get you on the right track. And I understand that there's some animosity, and I could see where it could happen right away. Me, with my even temper, no laughing, my even temper, I've blown up a few times, but I understand what you're going through, you didn't, you didn't know the rules, but now that you do know the rules, I'm hoping that you will read our charter, read the section one-twenty, I believe it's one-twenty-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code on sunshine law and congregating of more than two, are, the majority of the committee, in your case, it would be four, if you have six, if you have seven, same thing, still the majority. But going along those lines, I would, I would like to work with you, as would my colleagues. So I mean, the transparency has to be there, though, you have to inform us that you are holding a meeting, so that we can at least attend, and the other members of the audience and citizenry can attend, because it's a community relations committee, it's not seven people getting together and talking over things.
And now that we...
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in wrong, but you didn't give her five minutes, and the five minutes is up, after she had her five minutes, then you begin to talk, so it's...
But I will give you the floor now, Mr. Dudley. The floor is yours.
Okay, let me explain something to y'all, and I'm gonna settle quickly, people. There's a video out there, and in that video, you're gonna see Councilman Dudley never ever got upset, never ever. See, a video tells the story, and the mayor is a well over, and he sent me a message, and he thanked me for not getting upset and maintaining myself there, ma'am. Okay, let me tell y'all what happened. We never knew, she talking about council, nobody in council knew these meetings even existed. We were never told, under the sunshine law and the ROC, when I tried to explain this to her, I'm gonna tell you what happened to me. First of all, the meeting should have never happened, she admitted that they was holding these meetings in private, which they shouldn't have from the beginning. When I was told to come there, I went there and I sat and I offered some advice, but when you see the video, you're gonna find out that this individual standard is not being truthful. A video is the thousand words, I don't have to defend myself. When I made her aware, they say they don't, she didn't know. When you watch the video, you're gonna see, when, I'm telling her, this is a public meeting, I am entitled to be at a public meeting. Under the sunshine law, I'm saying this to her, under the ROC, I'm saying this to her. She directed one of the members who is here now to disconnect me from Zoom, and the process, I am still saying, I must have said it six or seven times to her, what part did she not understand? She come here and said, "Council don't wanna work with her." She come here and said, "Council don't wanna work with her." I bagged the difference. None of these members knew about it. And not only that, after I told her that the meetings were being held and you would notice on it, I never got upset. That the meetings were being held and they shouldn't be held, you cannot have a private meeting or you cannot have a secret meeting. She made a motion, and you're gonna see it on the video. She said, "I would like, I would like for us to continue to hold these meetings in private." And they took a vote. Now, all members didn't go with that. But you're gonna see the hands go up, even after you're told by a legislator. You say that you wanna work for council. You had me there. And I want to tell you now, when everybody sees this video and they see that you stood before council and said I was upset, at no time did I get, the mayor knows that he's sitting over there. So everybody knows, and the other members of council are gonna receive that video. And I'm gonna put that video on live stream. And I'm gonna let people see that you came up here and you made an accusation against me that was not true. I was trying to help you. I suggested, I said, "Y'all had several meetings, and I didn't know you were having a meeting. I was just told that day." And I said that you should pick a chair under the creation, you should consider picking a chair. That's on the video. Second of all, as you were going through it, I kinda felt uncomfortable, some of the things were said because I, when I first agreed to have this, and I spoke with Mayor Culover, and that's where it began, and finished up by Councilman Jason and other members of council. I said I wanted to keep it far away from politics as possible. But when it got into the conversation, I wasn't going, because everybody got the right to say, "But I'm not concerned about it. I'm concerned that you came to us now, ma'am, and you said that we didn't wanna work with you." I would have jumped at the chance, and I'm glad that a member actually mentioned to me to come there and say, "Hey, can you offer some advice?" I was giving you advice that you should pick a chair, that when you go about four meetings, somebody should have been charged, knowledgeable, and placed that. You say you didn't understand, and maybe you had somebody who understood Robert Rule. I know about two people on your committee, or three, who understand Robert Rule. And maybe y'all would have took a vote. You might have started with knowledgeable to be the chair, and maybe not you. But ma'am, when I kept telling you, "Do not disconnect me," that you are violating the law. You violated my rights. I know it violated your rights. I had a right to be at the meeting. You violated my rights, ma'am. And if anything, you should have came in and gave me an apology. But I'm gonna let the video play, and I'm gonna let it tell the story. And when everybody sees that video, you all gonna know that she stood up here and she was not truthful. The video would tell the tale. I have nothing else to say. Watch the video, everybody.
Mr. President? If I may, I just kinda wanna, I wanna, I wanna bring something to light that a lot of people probably don't realize. So on, on April 26th, we had a council meeting. Excuse me?
No, the lady, she can sit down and listen. It says standing there.
So on April 26th, we had a council meeting. And council ratified Resolution 15-2021, appointing those six members that I interviewed and put on the Community Relations Committee. On April 30th, or excuse me, on May 6th, or excuse me, the night of April 26th, if you recall, that night, I made a comment about my designee, Ms. Bach, that she is a Caucasian woman who is married to a Hispanic man who lives in a bilingual household. And then, and I said that you truly understand diversity, equity, and inclusion when you live in a bilingual household.
Mm-hmm.
A member of the audience on that Zoom call put words in my mouth. And to say that I said that only, I used the word "only," which I never used in my entire report that night. But it caused a stir on that Zoom meeting and a big debate. And you know there was a few members of the Community Relations Committee who called me the next day and said, "I don't know if I wanna be a part of this." So we have to figure out whether or not our Community Relations Committee is gonna be helpful to our city. Now, you have to understand, there's seven members there that worked hard. Now, yeah, they had a meeting in private. And I probably gave them the advice to do so. But keep in mind, none of those members have been, have taken an oath of office. They're not elected officials. So if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and I'll take the heat for that. But you have seven members who don't understand the correct procedure and Robert's Rules of Order. And I will tell you, judging by some of the things that happened in some of our council meetings, I don't know that we understand it completely.
No, we don't.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, nobody's perfect here. But I've seen these individuals work hard. Now, what happened to Councilman Dudley? Let me just say to the committee, I know you don't know Councilman Dudley like I know Councilman Dudley. And I did not see anything that Councilman Dudley did in that video that he would not have done at a council meeting or at any committee meeting. But he's got, Councilman Dudley, how many, 18 years?
No, 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 I'm getting ready to go.
He's got a lot of practice at this.
I got 14 years, Mr. Mayor, coming up 14 years.
He's got a lot of practice at this. And I realize that you all are still new and learning this procedure. And again, and I know talking to Tim Riley and talking to Jeff Jerome, you are not the only community relations committee that has been formed in northeast Ohio. There's other communities doing this too, and they're having a lot of the same issues because if you truly want a committee that's gonna work, I think you want a committee that is made up of people that have not been in politics. The problem is, they don't understand how politics really works. They don't understand how the procedures work. And I tell you, there's, there's been, you know, four meetings. One was actually in person here, and that one was not recorded. But the other three have been recorded. And those recordings are available if you wanna see them. But just understand, nobody is perfect. Heck, we all know that. And these guys have worked hard. Now, I'm not, I'm gonna tell you, I wasn't in the meeting, so I don't know exactly what was said in all those meetings because as a designee, and if you look at the law, if you look at the way Chapter 136 reads, it reads that "No member of the committee shall be an elected official." Now, the last time I checked, I'm an elected official. And the reason why you have a designee is because I'm an elected official and should not be part of that panel. So I'm trying to follow the ordinance as best as I can. I'm glad to see that it's in the legislative committee so that some things could get tightened up, you know, and summed up. But hopefully, that can get changed, and whatever you guys can clarify could happen. But I'd like to just address that. And I would like to tell the committee that after I reviewed the footage, Council Pro Tem Dudley was no different than he is on any council meeting and any other time that he's been in a committee meeting or a committee setting. That's just the way it is when you're dealing with a public meeting. So you're allowed to have that vocal ability. And, you know, I did not see him get out of line, is what I'm saying. Just my call. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Donnie, did you have something you wanna say?
Oh, doesn't matter.
And before I go with, I'm with anybody else, I'll pull this down, not up. We're putting this in the legislative committee, and we're going to be discussing the Community Relations Committee. That meeting will be made public. And from what I understand, I don't think it's going to be a Zoom call. I think it's going to be down here, which is, which I like a lot more. And maybe we can get together and set you straight on the rules of public meetings and get you, get you going on the right path so that we don't ever have this again. Because again, community relations, and we're not making that connection right now, you know. And in defense of Mr. Dudley, he does get a little behind himself in his cause. But I'll tell you one thing, no matter what you can say about Mr. Dudley, when you walk out that door, he's your best friend. He doesn't hold a grudge. He does not hold a grudge. And I, I've experienced that. We've had a couple battles. But let's work together on this and see what we can do. I'll schedule this legislative meeting, being the legislative chairman, as soon as possible so we can get this moving in the right direction. And I guarantee you, the legislative meeting will move a lot smoother than this meeting did tonight for me. So, but does anybody else have anything? Yes, sir. Step up, your name and address. Are you speaking on the same subject?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Bob Stumnak, and I just wanna say, especially to you, Mr. Dudley, our group is brand new. And we started, May 6th was our first meeting. And in that month period, we've had four meetings already. We are a very serious group of people, and we're trying to figure out what we are supposed to be doing. We have a three-year stint that is a volunteer stint. When you came into our meeting, none of us expected you in that meeting because our understanding was, is that we, our group, our meetings were not public because we were not elected or paid officials. So I'm sorry for the misunderstanding, or if you thought you weren't treated fairly, but no one was trying to disrespect you. We didn't expect you, and we felt blindsided by your approach, the way that you spoke to the group because we didn't think that we had to answer to anyone right now because we're just getting started. And our understanding was, is that our meetings were not open to the public because we didn't even know what we were doing yet. We don't even know everybody's names yet. I mean, we're just getting started. So I know it's a huge misunderstanding, and of course, we wanna work with council. But none of us are paid, none of us are elected, and we all came with really good intentions. And when we met with the mayor, we were each interviewed, and we were chosen to be on this committee. We take it seriously. And I don't believe that she is lying about you or trying to make you look bad. That instant was not a good one for any of us in that meeting. It made everyone extremely uncomfortable. And all of us have seen enough council meetings where there's been a lot of back and forth, it's been very edgy, and we did not want that in our meetings. We wanna try to keep a respectful dialogue going. And that includes with council. And we figured when we had something to say, we would present it to council. We had nothing to say yet because we don't exactly know what our direction is. And that's all I wanna say. I think it's a huge misunderstanding.
Well, since my name was mentioned, do allow me to respond. I will allow you to respond.
Once again, I say, watch the video. People, watch this video. Second of all, you say you didn't understand, and I got no quarrels with you, sir. But when you got a councilperson who's sat here, and like I say, volunteer, God knows I volunteer. You can look at my page. I do a lot of volunteer, my family. I don't ask to be paid for anything I do. I could have stayed out in public life and made much more than I do here because it's not about the money. It's about people, sir. But second of all, when I tried to explain, and I told you that this is a public meeting, you had the option to say, "You know what? Let's leave it here." Because I did ask to speak before I spoke. You could say, "Well, you know what? Let's let this meeting go to its end." Mr. Dudley, when I say, "I'll sit here," and you're gonna see on the video, I said, "I would just sit here." We could have let that meeting just finish out with me saying nothing. Because I told you that you was violating the sunshine law. I said it several times to you, sir, you all as a group. You're violating the ROC. At that point, you know you are. It's just like a trespassing sign on the yard, beware a dog. And you climb that fence and the dog bite you, but you knew the sign was there. I was saying that because I didn't want to see you get in trouble with this. I didn't want it to get out there that these meetings are being public. And at that time, you could say, "Hey, you know what? We didn't know it was private councilmen, that we couldn't have this meeting." And it could have ended a lot of that. It could have ended right then and there. But when you, I mean, somebody say to disconnect me for telling you something that I'm trying to save you from because when you violated that ROC and sunshine, you violated my rights to be able to attend that. I was trying to avoid that, and also the public right, all the residents in Garfield. I was trying to put you on notice. I was saying it nicely and was showing the video. And I said it several times. I didn't want it to get to this point. I was giving you some advice, and that advice was given to me. I didn't always know. But once the law directed and previous members of council, you got a council member more years than I am, sitting right there. But when they told me something that I knew maybe possibly right, I adhered to what they were saying. But nobody listened to me, and that's why we're here this evening. We didn't have to be here. In all respect, I was just trying to put you on notice. But like I said, no time did I get disrespectful, calling anybody out their name. I didn't do that. I remember my words were, "I'm saying," and I said over, sir, you know, over and over the same thing. And I was just putting you on notice. I didn't wanna come to this point. I rather had it been resolved, and we say, "Okay, we're gonna check it out, Councilman, but right now, we won't keep, we'll allow you to stay." That's all that had to happen. And no, my rights would have been violated. I got no quarrel with you.
Most of your names.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, you come up, you're speaking on the same subject, I assume. State your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Ian Cox. My address is 10920 Elmwood. And I responded to the councilmen because we've talked before. And I think the problem was just the demeanor. It's not always what you say, how you say it. And I think that's where, that's where the attack feeling came from. So it wasn't necessarily something that was out of order or out of place, but there needs to be something that we can bring to the table that's solution-based instead of this back and forth, because it's not gonna get better if we keep it that way. So to say that, we did have three of those meetings that were recorded. I don't know if it's possible, or if there's a way we could look at it in the law, or however you do it. But in order for us to be able to be a cohesive unit, we have to have meetings where we can put things together properly. And if they can be recorded and made public, I mean, that would even be a better solution than those members or everybody else who would like to sit in would have to sit in and just watch us break, come together as a unit because we really didn't know each other at all. And that was the whole premise behind us getting together. And I don't know how all this works either. I do know Robert's Rule of Order because I pastored it to church for nine years. But what I can say is I did not believe that we were under that kind of law, sunshine law, because we are not elected. And so that's why we didn't have that in place initially. So to bring the solution to the table, my question would be, what is it that we can do that will allow us to still remain public and become a cohesive unit?
What I will do is, again, we will have the legislative meeting. You will be invited and the Community Relations Committee. And we'll sit down to a meeting, and we'll talk about what was, the revision of a few things here, and we'll put you on the right track.
Okay, all right.
I have no problem. May I ask, if I may, the members of this committee, I've seen four of them so far. All the members, would you, the six, seven members, would you please stand up so at least we know who you are? Okay, I thank you for that. I appreciate that very much. This is the first we're seeing you.
And I, and I don't wanna take any more of your time, but I did wanna say this. It has to be something that I think we got, kinda got the cart before the horse. So when we all were put together, I felt like we should have had an open meeting possibly so we could have the discussion beforehand, and probably would have never happened. And now going forward, I think it hopefully will be better than what, the way it's, way it started.
I think we've made a major step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one last thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I just wanna say one thing, and Pastor Cox, you know, even after the meeting, I believe we had just a good email exchange on that issue. And see, that points to what Mike say. I say what I say, but when I leave a place, I don't like to take. I never had nothing happen to me like that before. But even Pastor there, and even Pastor Henry, we got a great relationship. But I reached out to Pastor Cox, and I let him know if it was a misunderstanding. And he didn't take it personally at that time, and that's what I was expecting. And along with Pastor Faulkner, anybody else that I may have had a conversation with. And they know I didn't take it no further than, but I, I don't think nobody deserved that when a person is putting you on notice. And I'm saying even in the future, if somebody sit there and they telling you something about a law that possibly may be true, you should really just kinda hold tight and say, "Hey, I gotta get back with the law director or jail for Tim." And that's what should have happened there, and it would have went no further. And that's what I was trying to say at the time. So I did have an email exchange with Pastor Cox right there. But like I say, getting irate, I wasn't irate, and that's why I didn't wanna say.
I think we've crossed that bridge already then.
Yeah.
I think we've crossed it. I think that, like, we've crossed that bridge. Will there be any more discussion on this subject tonight? Go ahead. State your name and address for the chairman, and before our clerk.
Donnie Wanderstock, 10905 Mountview Avenue.
Excuse me, how do you spell your last name?
I am not a member of this community, but I wanna say I've lived in this community about 30 years. I've been a teacher in this community for 35. So I just wanna say that when I heard the formation of this committee, I was thrilled because I think it was long overdue, much needed. I've heard from four people now from this committee, and I think that I can speak for mostly other people here. This is an impressive group, and I really hope that you can all work together, and I think it's right. I think it was a misunderstanding. I just- It was a misunderstanding. I just don't want anybody to lose sight of the importance of this group and being able to stay on the committee and do what's best for this community because God knows it's needed. Long overdue. And I'm, as the outsider looking in, I'm just very impressed with what I've seen. And I'm sure you have great ideas that you can contribute as the rest of council. And I also have to say, I would be very remiss if I did not say this, to Mr. Blake and Mr. and Matt, I'm really impressed as graduates of Garfield Heights. I knew you when you were in high school. But I also have to say to Mark Kay, I was Mark Kay's National Honor Society advisor. And membership into the National Honor Society is based on character, leadership, scholarship, and service. And I am just bursting with pride because you are so similar to how you were in high school. And the fact that you're doing what you're doing for this community and speaking so eloquently and trying to do your best, I'm more than impressed. And best of luck on that test. I hope you get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vaughn, you had a comment?
Yeah, real quick, to the, to the committee, I put together that piece of legislation that we voted on tonight with the idea that we could all go into a legislative meeting, sit down and talk things out and, and hash this all out. It's not going to be just one meeting. It's going to be a series of meetings for us to get to where we have to be with the committee. And I really think it's important that this groups or a group like this stay together, okay, to move our community forward. But I don't think you guys should have any meetings until we get this all taken care of. Do you guys agree with me on that? I mean, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, it does.
That way, we can get this all taken care of. We can start from ground zero and move it forward because it is important to the city of Garfield Heights. Thank you.
I will schedule this ASAP. So, okay, does anybody else have, yes, sir? State your name and address for the clerk.
He's speaking to the microphone.
Pastor Faulkner, 4568 East 104. I was a part of the community relations group. Prior to being selected, I spent about four months with Chief Kay and prior Mayor Kalovic talking about this group. So we had an opportunity to give us some focus as some direction that we should go in because of Section 136. Now, I was the one that invited Councilman Dudley because I had a question. And my question was, based on some of the conversation, are we crossing the line? So I wanted all of us to hear what that response was going to be. So he was invited. And what I heard during that time, because I did it on Zoom, what I heard during that time was actually a conversation that went one-sided. And the one-sided conversation was based on the fact that Councilman Dudley asked a question. The response was that we are in a closed session. There was a vote taken. And that vote basically allowed him to be disconnected. And from there, the meeting continued on. I'm here to say that if this is the behavior of said committee, then I will withdraw my participation because I did not sign up for this. This is not what we spent four months prior to meeting with the past mayor and Mayor Burke and Chief Kay about trying to find ways to bring harmony to the city of Garfield Heights. So I respect each and every one of you. I thank you for your time in the legislative committee, as you said, sir, that it will be a continuous meetings in order to bring about resolution. Robert rules of order, yes, I do understand Robert rules of order. As Pastor Cox said, being a pastor myself of a church for some period of time, we do have our own challenges. But I understand that the community, and I've lived here now for seven years, and I've watched this community, ex-police officer for Warrensville Heights, this is the reason why I was able to speak with Chief Kay and see how the community can support the police station. So I understand that. But what I don't understand is this, right here.
Well, I ask you not to walk away from this. Work with us and we will rely on your input and we will work together as, as a group to get this resolved because this is definitely needed.
Yes, and it is definitely needed. And this is the reason why I came forward in the earlier days before the decision was made because I know how needed it is. But I would appreciate that if we do this, and I heard you say earlier in council meeting about transparency, if we will continue to be transparent on all fronts.
Yes.
With no undercurrent, then I think we should be okay.
I believe so too.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One more question. Mayor Burke, could we possibly get copies of all the recordings from these meetings?
Absolutely.
And can we also get copies of any written communication notes whatsoever that this, are there any?
I don't know if there's any notes that they have. I wasn't in the meetings, but I do have all the, the actual meetings recorded. And whatever we can do to transcribe them, we'll get them transcribed for you.
The secretary doesn't have, they don't have a secretary?
No.
They have an elected, I believe.
Okay, we'll work on it. Okay.
When we do have this meeting, I would like to have a way of, of viewing the video portion of it so we can at least hear the audio part of it.
It'll be sent to you via email, probably.
Thank you, Mayor. I used to call him the mayor. Yes. Please step up to the mic so the clerk can hear you. Thank you.
To the Honorable Mayor Matt Burke, I met you before.
State your name and address.
My name is Edith Faulkner, F A U L K N E R. To the Honorable City Council, to all the members who have come, I say thank you. I'm a little nervous because when I get upset, and I am upset. I'm upset because that meeting that you're speaking about was so irate that I could hear it when I came past my husband's office, which alarmed me to stop. And I say, in all my training, ignorance of the law or ignorance of anything is no excuse. We were all raised to behave in a certain way. And not only was Mr. Dudley attacking, my husband was called out. All you heard was, who invited Mr., who invited Councilman Dudley? That's not Mr. Dudley attacking anyone. That's my husband being attacked. And if you can't represent a simple meeting, how would you represent a community? You cannot attack people because of how you feel, because of who you like, who you don't like. You are representing a committee that's supposed to represent the public. And how will you represent the public if you can't compose yourself? And then you come up here and try to reverse it on this gentleman? A seasoned man. He wasn't asked, and he, my husband was treated like this is a gang and who, who invited him? Who invited? I mean, excuse me? Is that how we conduct ourselves? Is that how we want to represent ourselves? That ain't gonna be in the book. That's called home training and common courtesy. And if you're gonna tell something, tell it off. Tell the truth. Don't get up here, oh, I, I don't know what happened. You know what happened. And you conspired to cover it. It's a shame before God. And I don't know if I got five minutes or five seconds, but it don't make sense. If you're going to do something, do it right. How will you correct anything if you're going to do something underground and then when you come out in public, this is all that he is? No. Nobody's perfect. You're right. And whether you believe in the Bible or not, it's true. Nobody's perfect. We were all born in sin. So we are sinful creatures of a sinful nature. So we will make mistakes. But to put a mistake under the rug with a lie, and that's what I'm calling, L I E. As far as I'm concerned, the committee needs to be revised and new members under each and every different ward. And maybe you can get something. Thank you.
I thank you for your comment. Okay, is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Okay, if not, we will go into miscellaneous comments. And we will start off with Mr. Dudley, Councilman Dudley.
Okay.
Miscellaneous comments, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, everybody, for coming out because, man, we ain't seen this room in over a year, you know? I kind of forgot what it looked like almost, you know? But I'm glad to see everybody back. And like I say, I hope that none of us sitting in the room prayed that none of us lost family members during the heat of the COVID, you know? But it's still out there and it's still alive. So still watch yourself, you know? I done took my shots and I don't push everybody else to take their shot, your choice. But if you went through what I went through when I got sick, that's something you don't want to see happen. Okay. What I want, I don't have to touch that subject. I believe we touched that other subject already tonight, so I'm not gonna go back on that. I want to say tonight that I wanted to keep all the people in prayer. You know, we saw more senseless violence in the last year and a half than you ever seen before. You know, the killings is just ridiculous that is going on out there right now. You know, it's not a black and white thing. It's a wrong thing. So I ask, you know, no matter what we talked about tonight, that when you leave it, the first prayer you're saying is you pray for those of the lost family members within the last year during this senseless violence, not just in Garfield Heights, but everywhere. Because people has got to stop. As you know, we had several in my ward within the last year. I believe I lost three people who was murdered in my ward, you know? And every time it was murdered, like I say, that's what I say, you see the difference in us when somebody passed in my ward is not a member of council that I didn't hear from, who reached out to me and said, hey, Mike, I heard about this, you know? And like during a tough time, we do come together as a council. And that's what I want to say, that we definitely do. I'd like to wish all of the fathers, and I'm gonna say, like we say sometime on social media, the real fathers, the ones who are taking care of their families and help pay the bill and help raise them children, I want to wish you all a happy Father's Day. And enjoy your day. That's your special day, you know? Enjoy your kids, your grandkids, and, and your family, and your wife, and your parents, if you still have them. I also like to say congratulations to Garfield Heights graduates and CMSD seniors because myself and Councilman Blake, we serve as the liaison to Garfield City School as well as Cleveland. And it's an honor to see all them kids walk across the stage and graduate, you know, graduate. So I'm very proud of them, you know? And I'm quite sure they're gonna go on. But like I say, a family is an investment and usually good parents, or one good parent is gonna bring a child through. And I would like to say that. And I'm not gonna speak on really nothing else. And like I say, I'm, I'm glad to see the members back. I'm glad to see us back. And I know we went through some tough times. And my prayers out to a lot of people who lost their job because that initial layoff I experienced in March 27th, I was like a great job, but I was last hired and I was first. My mom said fire because I got laid off. But you know, I'm praying that them people get their jobs back. I'm praying that they be able to maintain and keep a roof for their hair, most importantly, feed their family, clothes on their back and transportation. So I'm gonna say that. Just keep everything in prayer. And I'm happy to see my colleagues, the administration, and everybody back again. And I'm happy to see you all out. And like my council colleagues put it back, when I walk out the door, what happened here stays here. And I thank you there, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dudley.
As always, Councilman Dudley usually covers everything, so I'm not gonna repeat it. I'd just like to add, congratulations, Barb.
Yes, sir.
About time you retired.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. Please. I've retired three times. I've enjoyed it every time. That's all I have. Y'all have a good night.
And that would make me next. Let you congratulate, I learned that. I'd like to congratulate all the seniors that are graduating this year that have graduated. It's a big accomplishment and at least they got time to celebrate, like the kids that last year did not get a chance to go due to the pandemic. I'd like to wish all the fathers, Happy Father's Day. I'd like to wish Acting Chief Kay, good luck on the test. I hope you're sitting there next month. I'm pretty confident. I'd like to congratulate Barb for her years of service as clerk. She's, she's, she's helped me out a lot. I rode her pretty hard on pushing meetings and stuff. So, and she bared with me on it. So, but I appreciate the effort she put out and the work she's done for this council for the past 18 years. And with that, good luck.
Thank you.
And other than that, I'll get this legislative meeting scheduled ASAP so that we can continue. And I do wish that all the members would stay because at least, at least you know how we feel about each other now. So it's all out on the floor. We don't have to break in a new body. But we will get, we will work with you and we will get you going in the right direction as far as transparency goes. And with that, that's all I have. We will move on to Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to say, like many of my neighbors, I didn't take on the responsibility of trying to run for council and then actually apply to be a part of council. And this is my first time ever sitting in this seat, other than the days I took a picture saying that I will raise and, and take an oath of office for the seat. We need our citizens, our neighbors, to participate here in Garfield. And I've been here for 18 years. And it's the first time I ever heard of a group like you. And I applaud each of you because I know it's difficult and it's hard. With that said, you know, I'm new. And I'm trying to do something that is very difficult and very hard to do. And a group of these men have said so to me. And I'm learning it as I go, even the Robert rules of order, which I'm gonna be studying quite a bit, I can see. But I ask you, keep your original focus on what you came here to do. And then don't let the negative stuff deride you from what you want to achieve for this city. This city is important. I call it as, as one of the best damn cities in Ohio. And I mean that. I love Garfield Heights and I know you do too. And with that said, I just want you to understand that it takes a team. Y'all know that old saying, it takes a village. We're gonna have to be that team and that village to step up to the plate, to keep Garfield in the direction that we really want to go in and get rid of the negative stuff so that everybody else around the state can see. We're not just a landfill area. We're actually a city, a vibrant city, where people wants to come and live and raise their families and have fun, worship and serve the Lord and all those other things that we want to do. So I ask you, please, don't just step away from this. Jesus didn't quit on his people. Jesus just didn't walk away from a challenge. So I'm asking you, don't just walk away. Stick it out. Let us, as a legislative body, help you do what is needed for this city. Congratulations to our graduates. I want to say congratulations to those that are retiring like Barbara. She is so kind and so sweet since I met her. And I want to say, hey, look, Happy Father's Day to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, Mr. Blake.
First of all, Mr. Johnson, couldn't have said it any better than the way you just expressed your comments with the community relations committee. I'd like to wish Barb congratulations for all your years of service. And I hope you enjoy your retirement. You've always been very helpful to me. And I just want to You've always been very helpful to me, and I just want to say thank you, and I've always appreciated your efforts.
Thank you.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy upcoming Father's Day. And lastly, this past Memorial Day, we had the parade, and there's a number of people to thank that put effort into it. So I'd like to thank the Polish veterans, American Legion Post 304, the UPS store, James Greenwich with Aaron Signs, and Weldon Hastings for their contributions to the parade. I'd like to thank Mayor Burke and Pat Solemy, the police, fire, and service departments for their support. Special thanks goes to Father Heron, Oliver Boyett, and Nathan Wickard, who participated in the ceremony at the Veterans Plaza. And then there were numerous citizens that helped stage the parade. Bill and Sandra Douglas, Sherry Rasmussen, Ann Marie Messner, Carrie Burgholz, Lisa Leonard, Joey Leonard, Maya Leonard, Roseanne Snopel, Alexis Snopel, Adriana Snopel, Bonnie Glover, Wendy Williams, Wayne Williams, Jenna Waterbury, Frank Taglerini, PJ Nerones, Janice Tubbs, and Michael Dudley. And probably the person who deserves the biggest thank you is Jennifer Nerones. She works tirelessly on this parade, and she is really the driving force behind it, and I can't thank her enough for her efforts. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Blake. Next, Councilman Taglerini.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to address the committee. I served on several committees over the past few years myself and that there. And one thing I've got to state is that each and every committee that I went on to, I had the same situation you did. No knowledge of what I was gonna have to do or what was expected of me. There was no piece of paper handed to me about rules or regulations. I believe something has to be drawn up for each and every committee that we have so that we have some kind of guidance and of what is expected of us. Again, I've been on several, and not one piece of paper, not one, has ever been handed to me about what was expected of, of that. And I, my heart goes out to yous, and I hope we could put this all back together again. I know from just hearing yous tonight, there's a bunch of good people involved in this with their hearts involved in it, and that we can put it together. Please hold in there. Let's work together. Let's figure this out. And I asked the mayor for some kind of guidance for each and every committee that we have. Because again.
Mr. Taglerini, though, I'm not the legislative body, so I could offer guidance, I could try to put some things into a, you know, a format, but that format's already there. We just need some training. We just really need some training.
Whatever we have to do, I think something has to be.
But it's not spelled out in that, in that committee. It's not spelled out in that legislation, and that's what I'm calling on you legislators to do, is to put it into some legislative form.
Thank you.
Hopefully that'll happen in the legislative meeting.
Yeah. Also, I want to thank Chief for the year or so that he's took control of our city in a desperate times and that there. You did a wonderful job, and I, myself personally, and I'm, I'm sure ninety-nine percent of the people in the city thank you. And I hope and pray that we could work together at this level as time goes on. Barb, I've only been in council for a short period of time, but you've pulled me out several times already and that, and I want to thank you. And I know the stories that I've heard for over the years of how much input you put in and your knowledge. You have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you very much. It was always a good experience and a challenge working here, but I enjoyed it, and thank you very much for the resolution and everything tonight, all of you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Last but not least, as I've been driving around the city every day just about in the last couple of weeks, just observing, talking to people and so forth, I've been noticing a lot of people blowing the grass into the streets, and I ask yous, please, don't do that. It clogs the sewers, it costs us money to, to get them fixed up and that. Take a little consideration, pick up the grass clippings, don't blow them into the street. It doesn't even look good, so just stop on that. With that, you have my report, and have a Happy Father's Day to all.
Thank you, Councilman. And I guess we're saving the best for last. Go ahead, neighbor.
Barb, is there anything else you'd like to say before I do my report tonight?
What would I have to say? I, I want to thank all of council and Mayor Burke for the beautiful flowers that you gave me. They're gorgeous. And like I said, it's always been interesting working for the city, and I always liked knowing what's going to happen in the city kind of before the things happen because you hear things on council and in the committee meetings first. And I just to thank everybody who came out here tonight for this meeting, our first one back here, that's exciting. And I think that's, thank you, thank you for the honor. Good night. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom, as far as yours.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for coming out. It was great seeing forty-some people attend a council meeting. Even before the pandemic, if we get twelve fifteen, we were doing well, so it was great seeing all the faces tonight. But Mayor Burke, I got a complaint. At least Mayor Kalova turned on the air conditioning.
Is that why everybody was waving those cards?
I think next time we need to boost the air a little bit. You got that, Mark? Oh, that's Mark, okay. Everybody, Barb, I want to wish you good luck. It's been a pleasure. You and I have worked together on planning, on council stuff. We've had some great times. We've shared a lot of laughs on certain things. I wish you the best. Enjoy retirement. I tried it once, it lasted thirty days. So good luck with that.
Thanks again.
I want to remind everybody that this is tonight's meeting. We're only having one council meeting in the month of June, July, and August. Our next meeting will be on July the 12th. I'm going to be having a block watch up at St. Monica's Pavilion on Tuesday, June 29th at 7:00 PM. We're back in the back near the fields there in the pavilion. All are welcome. Just come on up, join us. It's really kind of nice sitting out there at night. We open up all those doors, the air flows nicely. You know, both nights we've, we've done so far have been great, and I, I really encourage as many people as possible to come up. You know, everybody, it's Father's Day. If your fathers are living, spend some time with them. If they've gone on, give them a prayer. But most of all, spend the time with your family and enjoy your family and be safe. Fireworks, folks, please, please. The number of calls I'm already getting for fireworks, and you know, everybody says it's their dogs. You know what? It's me, too. You know, you got to remember, not everybody can take those fireworks anymore, so let's kind of curtail the noise, and let's, you know, be very, very cautious. You don't know how many times we're hearing of people blowing off their fingers or, or this or that, so please be careful. With that, Mr. Chairman, you have my report. I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting now.
On the motion to adjourn tonight's council meeting, may I have a second?
You got it.
What's a second? Mr. Donahue? Barb, would you take a roll call, please? Starting with Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donavich?
Yes.
Donavich?
Donavich votes, yeah.